Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, our regular joint finance committee meeting later on in a public hearing. Meeting is also on the agenda. It's Monday, May 1st, 2017. This is the 6:30 selectmen's meeting. Then we'll be joined by the Finance Committee at 7 o'clock for a joint meeting and a public hearing. I hereby call this meeting to order. And let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing that we have a full board tonight, the first hour of business is the reorganization of the Select Board. And I turn this over to the Town Administrator.
And if I had a gavel, I'd be able to do that. But thank you so much. I really appreciate that. I am really happy to see the full complement of the board. As you know, this is a pivotal time right after an annual election, and we've had two meetings since that time where we're just shy. So, welcome, everybody. The one thing that I would say that I might need to impart is that with this board, after speaking with town council way in advance of the elections because there were a number of candidates on the slate and there was concerns about different relationships, this has nothing to do with the relationships part. This has to do with the fact that in the past, I think this board had a precedent of anybody who is nominated as chairman and elected as chairman would receive a small stipend of $100 more. And, believe it or not, a lot of communities don't do this properly. But if the person who is being nominated accepts the stipend, they cannot vote for themselves.
The additional $100.
The additional $100 stipend. So, that should be important for all of you to know, depending on how you not only will vote, but the way that you'll cast your actual recommendation. So, having said that, there were no other things that Town Council had imparted to us. And this doesn't apply just to the Board of Selectmen. Any board that's receiving an extra stipend for the chairman going forward, that the chairman themselves cannot vote for themselves if they're going to receive the stipend. Now, if they choose not to receive the stipend and they are to be paid the same as any other board member, then they can vote for themselves. Okay? So, with that, I would entertain motions. Obviously, you have several positions. You have a chairmanship that's open, vice chairmanship, and also a secretary. And with that, I would entertain any motions any individuals have. We can start with the chairmanship if that would be good, and then I can hand over the rest of the meeting and the conducting of those offices from there.
I'd like to make a motion for Tom Hallworth, Chairman.
Second.
We've had a motion made and seconded.
You can speak if you want to.
Is there any discussion? Made in the first and seconded, is there any discussion?
I don't care to hold that seat at this time.
I personally, no offense, Tom, but I don't think I'd go for you.
In that case, I'd amend my motion to have Joe Repose stay on his chair.
Okay.
You need some time under your belt.
So, a motion has been made, and do we have a second to make the amendment that Mr. Barrett has to make Mr. Chairman to be Joe Repose?
And I would forego the stipend, additional stipend.
Okay. Could we have an actual change to the motion, if that's so in your keeping?
I would motion for Joe Repose to stay on his chair and also not to accept and to forego the extra $100 stipend.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded this time by Mr. Andrew. Okay. Having said that, all those in favor?
You okay with that?
For another year.
Good.
Okay. Sorry, I forgot the discussion piece. I'm sorry. Any other further discussion?
No.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Then the motion carries, and Mr. Chairman, you can have your gavel back, but I just don't have it. Thank you, thank you all.
Vice Chair.
I make a motion that Jennifer Dean-Wing to be Vice Chair of the Board.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Secretary.
I make a motion that Tom Hall will be Secretary.
Secretary? Usually, one of the newbies get it.
Yeah.
You don't do anything.
Oh, no.
It's honest. I'm just being honest.
That's fine.
I believe Andrew and then Roland.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have Joe's $100?
For doing nothing.
Well, you do take minutes. You didn't have mine if Jennifer's not here.
Moving on, we had minutes on the agenda tonight, and we're just gonna table them until our next meeting. And that, some last-minute edits came in, and there's nothing really critical in those minutes that we need to get approved tonight. So, we'll table them until the next meeting. Public forum, anyone wish to address the board?
Is she on? Seen her?
No.
Yeah, this would be a good time, Angela.
She's waiting for the budget, I think.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, for the minutes committee.
Moving forward, review and ratification of the April 18th, 2017 vote to approve the Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Let me comment on that. The board did meet on April 18th, 2017 to review and approve the warrant for the Annual Town Meeting. The meeting was televised, and there were people in the audience. However, when the meeting notice was posted, the Monday holiday, Patriots' Day, which was the 17th, was inadvertently not counted in the lead time. Therefore, the meeting did not receive the full 48 hours of notice as required by the open meeting law. In order to address this issue and make sure that no one that wished to speak, to hear the discussion, gets left out, so we place it on this evening's meeting agenda as well, and we'll review the warrant again, and then later vote to ratify a previous approval. At the board's previous meeting, articles 1 through 6, and 9 through 12 were unanimously approved as proposed without discussion. Articles 7 and 8 were held for discussion. The following is a summary of the discussion. Article number 7, the town administrator indicated that the revolving fund article was placed on warrant after discussion with the financial team and consideration of changes promulgated by the Municipal Modernization Act relative to town meeting revolving funds. She also discussed that there are two new accounts proposed in the warrant article. One account would allow the senior senator to put funds towards services and programs for seniors. Another account relates to the future services provided through the Board of Health concerning a trash bag collection sticker program. Article number 8 relating to the budget, the capital budget. The Board of Selectmen discussed that there were no major expenditures relating to the current capital plan. However, funds will be recommended to be put towards upcoming anticipated capital needs. Following a five-year plan is important for the future, especially if and when the town needs to look at any bonding on major projects. Articles 13 through 17 were voted to be removed as they involve street acceptances, which the majority of the board believed would not be ready for town meeting action.
And that was a vote of three to one?
Three to one. While not legally mandatory, I could ask that if anyone in the audience has question or comment on that, you're welcome to do so at this time. Hearing none. The Chair would entertain a motion for the board to ratify the vote it took on April 18th, 2017 approving the May 8th, 2017 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. It is the Town Council's opinion that the Annual Town Meeting Warrant itself is valid, and the meeting can proceed as scheduled. So, I'll entertain a motion to ratify.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted you to know that after having had that issue brought before me by the town clerk, I had also circulated information to each of the members that basically said that Town Council looked at that as a minor infraction and that you can cure this simply by doing what you just did. So, I think that that was an important action on the part of the board, and I'm going by their recommendation and know that everybody has received that. So, I think that's important to note as well.
Thank you.
I think it's important, too, to stay on our timeline, the annual town meeting. So, you may not agree with the votes that occurred at that meeting. I think keeping the meeting on track is important.
Did I have the email sent by the Town Council, the original, if that would be no problem?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
You actually have it in your memorandum?
No, that was what you sent.
No, 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 that's verbatim. But I can send that to you.
Yeah.
It's verbatim. I put it in so that I could actually.
Cut and paste.
Make sure that you understood.
Yeah.
Sure. Yes, absolutely.
Other, moving on, Centennial Committee?
Sure. So, on behalf of the Centennial Committee, we were to meet last week, but it gets a little -- we worked so hard for so long that sometimes it's hard to get our full complement of the board, and we wanted to do so. So, we weren't able to get the new charge, but I will tell you what the plan is. So, next Tuesday, which is the 10th, we'll be having our meeting, and the committee.
Next Tuesday's the ninth.
Is it the ninth?
Okay, the ninth. So, what the committee had decided at a previous meeting is, obviously, the committee will be dissolved come June 30th because the events have completed. But there is funds that are left over, and typically, they do some type of commemorative item back to the town with any remaining funds. The committee feels that there's some work that they want to do with this, but it's not going to be complete by June 30th. So, what they are gonna ask is that the Centennial Commemoration Committee be formed for one year or to be dissolved upon completion of their charge, and a new charge will be drafted. So, I have a draft form. We're gonna review that at our next meeting, and that committee will then approve of it and send it over to you so that -- and everybody on the Centennial Committee wishes to continue. So, they're not looking for additional people. We're looking just to let that group continue and then figure out how that remaining funds will be used and how it will come back to the town. So, at that meeting, at the next meeting, please put it on the agenda so that come June 30th, we'll be recreating a new board with the 11 members who have served, some from the very beginning and some, you know, halfway through. So, that is where they stand, but they just really need extra time. They don't wanna rush it, and they wanna do it the right way. So, it took us some time to get the final number. That was the problem. It was with work through Maryland and the Newtown Accountant to get the proper number for our account. So, that was the holdup, not by any other item but that. So, we'll -- so, Les, he's outside. But so that will be coming down, and that's the reason. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments or anything on that. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
New business, open road permit, bond approval, Lincoln and Fair Streets.
Mr. Chairman, before you, you have several documents, one relating to an application checklist, another relating to the actual road opening permit application. I would suggest that we have a Highway Surveyor come before us. We don't do many of these permit applications, but having said that, this was one that we actually did some consultation with both the towns of Blackstone and Uxbridge. And I think if you look at it, it relates to Patriot Construction, Inc., which the contact person who has actually opened the actual permit application is Kevin O'Sullivan, and he is doing it on behalf of Millville Estates at this point. And if you could talk a little bit about that, and I can explain what would be required to do a road opening permit.
As she said, we don't usually do many of these. This is actually the first full application we've done since I've been in the seat for a little bit over six years now. So, we reached out to other towns for their format and different fees and bond amounts to do different various types of work. This work here is only for testing because the development that they want to put in falls within a certain distance of the town's fire suppression system. They're required to extend it at their expense. It's a part of their expense to find out what the cost is gonna be is to do test holes, and they're gonna start on Lincoln Street within 10 feet of the last fire hydrant, and they're gonna go every 10 feet up to the intersection of Lincoln and Fair Street and then proceed up Fair Street all the way to where the entrance of the development that is being worked on to be proposed, to find out what the cost would be to do this water line. To my understanding is they're gonna drill three-inch holes, 10 feet deep every 10 feet. I look at it as, you know, Millville's gonna get results from this. Whether they do the -- go through with this development, this company or somebody else buys it, we're gonna know what's in that road also. They're going to fill the road back up as putting the plan with flowable fill to the, you know, top foot. Then they're gonna put concrete, then they're gonna fill the holes with asphalt. That's the proper way to do test boring holes, to fill them back up. When this project is to proceed in the future, if it goes that far, obviously, there'll be another form for road opening, for saw cutting, for paving, which will be a lot more extensive.
So, this bond protects the town in terms of the repair as a result of the.
Correct. If they do this, and one of the holes, something happens and it doesn't get filled in properly and the road caves in, we have recourse to go back up.
The other thing I think that's important to know is that the actual application that we've adopted really looks at it in two stages for the bond to be released, recognizing that there can be settling and there can be issues with closing back up a road, whether it's for a large trench or for boring. So, there's both a first release after a year that they can actually, you know, request in writing, and then a final release in two years. So, it gives you an example of how serious, you know, opening and closing a road or, you know, granting someone the ability to have breached the asphalt is.
Are we ready to vote on this tonight?
I have a couple of questions. What was the size again? 10 feet down?
Three inches in diameter.
Oh, three inches?
Inches. This is only testing.
Three inches, 10 feet down?
10 feet down, 10 feet apart.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And this, you said that you consulted with some other towns and found out what theirs?
Yeah, there's oftentimes, in terms of bonds, in Blackstone, for any of their open road permitting, application for their bonding, they typically do 20,000. There's several others that do 20,000. One of the things in Uxbridge is they're actually looking at their open road bond requirements for this very reason, that oftentimes, they might take too little and too much work is done. So, I think on the safe side, we were adopting a higher amount. There was no negative consequence in asking the person who -- Patriot Construction, they had no problem actually, you know, coming forth with that. So, the next part of it would be to have both a sign-off from the Highway Surveyor and the Board of Selectmen. And then from there, it becomes also the contractor and the owner of the actual -- who's soliciting them to do the work. So, you have actually a number of.
So, how long does it take them to do this? Like, is it a day, three days, a week?
To my knowledge, from talking to Mr. O'Sullivan, it's gonna depend on what he finds.
So, I assume that this is because if they extend, they wanna know what they're hitting along the way.
Correct.
Now, my question is, there's a lot of, you know, we have septic and artesian wells, and I know it's obviously not gonna -- deep enough to impact any water lines, well, natural aquifer lines. But we all know that Millville's built on ledge. So, if they get to a part, what are they gonna do?
A part of ledge?
Yeah. Are they gonna keep going?
Drilling?
Do they, yeah.
No, they're only going 10 feet.
10 feet.
This is gonna determine what it's gonna cost them to put in the water line.
Okay.
Because if there's ledge there and they wanna put this water line in, proceed with this development, they're gonna saw cut and hammer and propose to blast, which, you know, will be a whole nother situation. But this is all to put a number on it. I mean, I could tell you it's gonna cost you $100 to put in 10 feet of pipe, and it could be gravel, could be ledge. This is gonna help them do that.
I mean, 'cause they didn't get far down in that school before they found ledge. I mean, it's rooted up right from the auditorium.
I've already told Mr. O'Sullivan that I know personally, the last hydrant on Lincoln Street is in a wall of ledge. They stopped there for that reason.
Right.
It just, it wasn't.
I mean, I know some people think ledge is deeper in the ground, but here in Millville, that's not necessarily the case.
Correct.
So, okay.
Will this work be done while school is out?
I don't have that answer. I think he was trying to do this during April vacation, to be honest with you. The last I knew, he was ready to go. He's definitely gonna be coordinating with the police department in how it works.
And I'm sure keeping the police department in yourself, keeping the school in the loop, that buses are coming up and down, it's a narrow road.
Yep.
I mean, I know when we changed trash companies, we had an issue because they were on Fair Street during school time, and it caused the backup. So, just, you know, making sure that, you know, obviously, the neighbors and everyone who's traveling that road is well aware. All right, that's it. That was all my questions.
Any other discussion?
It was just because it was a template from another town. It was superintendent of Public Works, which just needs to be changed.
Pretty sure you changed them all except for that one, Highway Surveyor.
Why reinvent the wheel? And towns already have things out there that are working and approved legally. Thanks.
So, I'll entertain hearing the motion to have the Select Board and the Highway Surveyor sign off on the bond application. So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Along with the original forms, so you can see.
We won't be signing minutes tonight. Our next, we can sign this off.
And your next regular meeting will be after town meeting on May 15th.
Now, are we having this?
Yes, I was gonna have him say something. So, we actually, while you're signing minutes, okay, Mr. Chairman, he's back.
Thank you.
She was asking if we were gonna also have an executive session, but I figured you would go, yes.
Take an order.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna give up our seats for Finkham, yes, for their public hearing?
No, we can all move around like we did last go around.
Okay. And then we have an executive session at the conclusion of their meeting.
I'll get the -- we're gonna have to go, we're gonna do an executive session.
We're gonna leave here to go, and then we'll move, and then we'll go back and take executive session after the finance.
No, this is saying it's a joint meeting with finance. That's why I said should we move.
That's what I'm saying. But we're gonna make a motion to do that, to do all of that.
To do what?
To go into, leave this meeting, to go into the public hearing, and come back, then go into executive session, then to come back only to adjourn.
That sound like a motion to me.
But it's not our public hearing.
All right.
It's not our public hearing. Finkham will open their public hearing, and because there's a quorum.
Right.
It needs to be.
It's your meeting.
Yeah, it's their meeting, it's not our public hearing.
So, you're right about doing the vote. It just has to come, you know, after the public hearing, that's all.
Got you.
Then we'll get the actual time. I know what you're saying, Roland.
Yep.
Yeah, if it was ours, we'd win. Okay. All right.
So, welcome the Finance Committee to join us.
We're gonna welcome the Selectmen to join us. We're gonna call this meeting to order at 7:05. Millville Finance Committee, only to suspend our meeting, to enter into our public hearing with regards to the financial articles on the Town Meeting Warrant. So, again, welcome, everyone. This is the most people I've seen at a public hearing in, ever. So, all right, we'll go through the articles one at a time, up to the end of the financial articles.
Oh, I was gonna say, if you're going to either entertain a motion to enter into your public hearing instead of that time, okay, that'd be great.
So, I entertain a motion to enter to our public hearing.
Make a motion to enter the public hearing.
A second there.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. This is with regards to the Town Meeting Warrant for Monday, May 8th, 2017, 7:00 p.m.
2017, 7:00 PM. Article one, monetary increases. See if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash for the line item article or other funding source that we reduce by the same amount and take any other action relative thereto. Is there any questions on that? All right, I entertain a motion to, for the Finance Committee to recommend that article as written.
Make a motion to accept Article one, monetary increases, as written.
Can I second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. All right, Article two is bills of prior fiscal year. See if the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 64, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal years and/or take any action relative thereto.
Make a motion to accept Article two, bills of prior fiscal year, as written.
I'll second.
All right, moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Snow and ice deficit. See if the town votes transfer and appropriate some monies from the stabilization fund to fund deficits incurred with the snow and ice budget per Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Make a motion to accept Article three, snow and ice deficit, as written.
Can I second that?
Any discussion? I believe it was 106, $106,000. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Article four, Highway Department, Chapter 90. See if the vote, the town will vote to accept, to expend such sum or sums of money allotted to, or to be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, take any other, or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for fiscal year 2018, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division for such purposes, and further to authorize the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of 100% reimbursement of said amounts, or take any action relative thereto.
Make a motion to recommend Article four, Highway Department, Chapter 90, as written.
I'll second that.
All right, moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Article five, cable license fees. See if the town will vote to transfer from PEG access and related cable funds account to the sum of $7,500.00 dollars to forward to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school district, or take any other action relative thereto.
Make a motion to accept Article five, cable license fees, as written.
Can I second that?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article six, Fund Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds to the sum of $7,500 to the OPEB Liability Trust Fund for the purpose of reducing the unfunded actuarial liability of health care and other post-employment benefits of retired employees, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Make a motion to accept Article six, Fund Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, as written.
I'll second that.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Jennifer?
How far are we along in this?
We're in the third year of payment, payments towards that. And our total liability was 145, 144, 144,000. It was the suggestion by our financial team that we continue at the level that we're continuing. The state doesn't necessarily require you to be there, but it requires you to start getting there with the hopes of being there within 20 years, I think, is the, is to reach that point.
Was it 75 each year?
Seventy-five hundred, yeah. So we're...
Okay, thank you.
So that's what, 22.5 we're at so far, of our 144,000 dollar liability.
Thank you.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, revolving funds. See if the town vote pursuant to provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 53E and a half, as most recently amended, to establish the following revolving funds for fiscal year 2018, and further to establish fiscal year spending limits as set forth below. And two, amend the general bylaws by inserting the new bylaw establishing various revolving funds specifying the departmental receipts to be credited to each fund, the departmental purposes or programs for which each fund may be expended, and the entity authorized to expend each fund such bylaw to provide as follows. I'm not going to read every single one of these, if that's acceptable to everybody.
Mr. Chairman, I can just reiterate that there are two that are very familiar to the town, townspeople when they see it, and that's Parks and Recreation, as well as the police revolving funds. The two new ones, one is the Board of Health actually creating a new revolving fund to address a bag sticker issue in which they're going to try to keep to a minimum of two trash barrels. And then people, if they have additional trash, would need to get a sticker and they would be, you know, going to the town for that. So there would be costs related to providing that service. And the other is to sort of make whole, what I think the Board of Selectmen and also the Finance Committee in the past had done something where the senior center revolving funds were changed. With the Mass. Municipal Modernization Bill, it makes it clear that the senior center revolving funds could be re-implemented, and we're doing that as well. And so you'll see that on, on again. And I know that's making our senior center...
So any fees collected can be used towards programs?
Exactly. Transportation, senior center rental, and other, other services that they'll be collecting for, but it can go to costs related to providing any of their services. So it's broad.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion to accept Article seven as written.
Make a motion to accept Article seven, revolving funds, as written.
Are we permitted to ask a question?
You absolutely are.
A procedural thing. A couple of places you mentioned, 2018. So this is something that will be voted on every year, renewed every year? Is that how this goes?
Typically, the revolving funds are voted on every year.
But the Mass. Municipal Modernization has made some changes, and we are actually adopting an actual bylaw component that has been instructed to us through town council so that some of the things that we used to do in terms of setting the cap and all of that, that will change by adopting the actual bylaw. So hopefully, it'll get more streamlined going forward, and it'll allow us to continue to collect in, in a way that is not as cumbersome.
Are there any other questions about the revolving funds? Okay, you made the motion?
I did.
And was it seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, all right, seconded. All right, moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Fund Capital Budget. See if the town will vote to raise and or appropriate and or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund the fiscal year 2018 proposed capital budget, take any other action relative thereto. Capital Plan, the Capital Planning Committee had put together a five-year capital plan, and this year of the capital plan was relatively light in its needs, with the exception of adding to our FY19 Cruiser line item and our impending ambulance line item. So the Finance Committee is going to be recommending that $10,000 go into the FY19 Cruiser line and $20,000 go into the ambulance line this year. I entertain a motion to accept that?
Make a motion to accept Article eight, Fund Capital Budget, as written.
Can I second that?
Any further discussion? Anybody else have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Article nine, Stabilization Fund. See if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to be placed in the stabilization fund, or take any other action in relation thereto. This is an annual article that's, that we vote on at our town meetings. Unfortunately, this year, it looks like the stabilization fund's going to be going in the other direction. So we'll leave this in for now and take it from here. Joe?
Our balance going into this town meeting is $424,000. 424, 426?
424, so.
424. $424,000. And with the, with our proposed budget, that will reduce that stabilization by $163,250.
However, you maintain 5%?
No. That will bring us below the 5% threshold.
It'll take us about 4.2% as well.
We were hoping to maintain the, that threshold, but we, we made some concessions in the best interest of our departments, and that's where we came to. It's not happy news, but it's news nonetheless. So I entertain a motion to approve this article?
Make a motion to accept Article nine, Stabilization Fund, as written.
Can I second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our last financial article to discuss at this public hearing, Article 10, which is our fiscal year 2018 budget. See if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, to borrow, transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be deemed necessary to defray town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest and compensation for town officers, and to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, or take any other action in relation thereto. So the Finance Committee, in conjunction with the Town Administrator, the Selectmen, the School Department, all of our town departments have worked, and our financial team have worked very diligently on our budget this year. When we began our process, our net deficit was $535,112. And that was with all of our departments bringing us their budgets. And we looked at those budgets, and as none of them were particularly unreasonable, $535,000 was not even remotely, of deficit was not even remotely a possible number. So the Finance Committee came up with a plan. We called it a shared sacrifice plan. So what we were able to do with our budget was take a little, a little piece from, well, big pieces from every aspect of our, of our budget, including our stabilization account, like I said, in the amount of $163,250. That was just a balance. We had intended to reduce our, the ask from the school by a pretty significant amount. We've been working very closely with them, had a couple of meetings with them, specifically in the interest of keeping the lines of communication open. And after our last meeting with them, we met amongst ourselves and determined that there really was a need there. And there's always really been a need there. So I don't want to diminish that, but we, we went back and looked at the, we really did not want to reduce our stabilization down below the 5% threshold that's suggested to us by our financial team. However, where we were already making some pretty significant cuts in that area, we, we felt that a little bit more of a cut in the interest of our departments was, was worth the pain. So we did bring our, our school number back up, about $63,000 over what, what our original past was going to be of additional contribution, which brings their total gross operating budget growth up to about 1.5% with, with Blackstone's proportion of that number. We did meet with Blackstone. Mike met with, with the Blackstone Town Administrator, and Jennifer was there, and the Chairman of the Finance Committee and the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Blackstone. And we all agreed that, that the contentious nature of last year's situation was, was not in the best interest of anybody. So we all, amongst ourselves, agreed on numbers that are concurrent. Their number is concurrent with our number. So what gets voted at our town meeting and what gets voted on their town meeting is going to meet, it's going to match. We have told the, the school committee what our, what our new number was, and as it might not have been exactly what they were looking for, but, you know, I would hope at least it was, it was a step in the right direction. We did increase some services to our public safety. We increased some services to our Highway Department. Again, not at the level that it really should be, which is what, what we have been terming a right-sized budget. We're not quite at a right-sized budget yet. And part of the reason we're not at a right-sized budget is because we don't have a right-sized revenue. So moving forward, after this town meeting, and over the course of the next year, prior to the next budget year, and the next town meeting, we're going to be working very closely with every single department in the town, with the school departments, and, you know, public safety, in conjunction with the Selectmen and the Town Administrator. We're going to be coming up with a right-sized budget, where we should be in the services that the town is providing for its townspeople. And with that, we're going to come up with the number as to where we're deficient in our revenue. And then we're going to be bringing that forth to the townspeople to remedy that issue, remedy that problem. This is our last year that we are able to use our reserves to balance our budget. There's no more. This is it. This is ground zero. And the Finance Committee, for the better part of the last decade, at least since I've been involved, has been informing the town that, that we were headed for this situation. We haven't been lying to you. We haven't been overdramatizing the situation. We've been, every year, telling the town, we can't keep doing this, we can't keep doing this, we can't keep doing this. We've, we've brought ourselves to the edge. And in order to move to the next step, and going forward in the future, we're going to have to make some changes with regards to our revenue and with regards to our budgets, accordingly, and move us, move us forward. For the best interest of the town, the townspeople, the students, the, everybody, and the employees especially. You know, we've, we've got a lot of really good people working for our town that, that are not at the level at which they should be at, and they're not getting the, the resources and the backing at the level that they should be at, too. And we're actually missing out on some opportunities because our services are at a level that, they're, they're below where they should be. So we're going to fix that problem. And, you know, the, the first step in doing so, specifically with regards to the, to the DLS report, was, was to hire a town administrator to kind of lead us and bring us into the next phase of Millville's development. And we did that. We started there. And then we started looking at the, the services that we provide, and some of the processes within our departments, and our financial practices, and every aspect of the town government. And we're headed in the right direction. It took us decades to... It took us decades to get to this point, so it's going to give us a couple of years to get back from it. That being said, I would entertain a motion to approve Article ten as written.
Make a motion to accept Article ten fiscal year 2018 budget as written.
May I second that?
All right. Is there any further discussion? Anybody have any questions?
Do you have a question? Will you share with us the budget numbers, or do we have to wait till Monday?
Yeah, we can share with you.
Thank you.
We have them. Right here. It'll be the easiest way to do it.
I can, I can provide that to you afterwards, if that's all right. I mean, unless you want the total figure for, but that would also have some of the other additional things in, that are not related. I know you're looking for the, the one number.
Our total budget figure was $6,217,160. Our, I'm assuming you're looking for the education one specifically?
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if we get in touch with them, she'll be able to send it to you electronically, and it's easier to peruse that way. We just, we actually just got our final, we had made some, some adjustments, and we just got our final numbers at about four o'clock this afternoon, so. Does anybody else have any questions before we, Mr. Tringali?
As you sit here tonight, what's the current level of uncollected taxes? It's a dollar figure for that.
One point?
It's a little bit less than that.
A little bit less than that?
Yeah, and the people, go ahead, go ahead. I don't want me to interrupt you, because I know they'll ask me.
About a million dollars?
Yeah, about that. And it's not just one form of taxes, you know, for those people who haven't paid foreclosure ones, ones that are considered in tax title, there's a number of ones. So that number is not just one figure that's easy to go after. There's also typically, our financial team has said, typically there's about a third of uncollected taxes that doesn't go anywhere, but we asked that because I know that number at the last meeting that you were at was a little bit concerning, but the overall, you know, number that we are used to was roughly about, you know, 500,000, a little bit more, almost 600,000. But there are some other uncollected pieces that we're not necessarily familiar with going after, and that's, that's part of what we look at by the old.
The, the number that we had been told prior to, to our last meeting was, I'm assuming, the aggregate total of everything, of every type and every.
Thing we could go after.
Everything we could possibly ever attempt to recover.
Is it like a recommended percentage by the state, or, you know, what's, you said like five percent is a target number for stabilization, and how about uncollected taxes? What's considered a reasonable number?
Zero.
Of course.
The DLS report has that particular, you know, percentage.
And, you know, part of, part of what we're, what we're trying to do, beginning a tiny bit with this budget and hopefully in future budgets, is to provide the resources in the areas that are going to allow us to collect those taxes, because it takes a lot of resources, time, money, personnel, to go after, tax title situations, foreclosure situations, you know, there's, there's a lot involved in that. And unfortunately, our budgets were shaved so lean in the last few years that we didn't have the resources to follow through with that. We were just trying to keep our head above water with what we had going on currently.
Makes more sense to pour money into that in order to reap more return?
That's where, that's where we're, that's what we've started doing with this budget.
Part of it is, is with the financial team. That's a huge investment for us. We were used to putting only $25,000 into a part-time accountant, and after coming into this position, I realized what that meant. It meant that a lot of things that needed to be done were not getting done. It was woefully inadequate. Prior to that, we had a very sound accountant who was a chief financial officer for another community, and I think, you know, it always had the best interests of this town in mind. But like anything, you know, with time, we find that the town has different needs, and right now, with the kinds of advice that we're getting, along with the fact that this is a really great finance committee, and I will say that they've worked tirelessly since last June, and when I talk about more than two dozen meetings, both workshop meetings and formal meetings, that is what they have been doing. So I give them a lot of credit because it hasn't been just about formulating the budget. It's really about all these other pieces, from trying to go to uncollected fees and enforcement issues, to trying to look at what's the next step going forward. So it's not just the recommendation that we have to right-size our budget, it is the other pieces, and our financial team, the next steps after we get through town meeting, aside from trying to right-size our budget and our tax rate to support that, it's also going to be, I would say, a very vigorous collection-oriented environment. And I say that not lightly, because I think it's going to be very different than what people have been used to in this community. And I agree with you that it's, it's time, it's overdue, and, you know, hopefully from that we'll, you know, yield some really good results. So I commit you to that because there's no other way to do it. And that's one thing I think both this board and my board and also my department heads know, that I'm pretty vigorous about wanting to do what I think is in the best interest of the town and making sure that everyone pays their fair share.
Yeah, particularly if we're thinking the O-word at some point down the road. You've got to pull in every nickel and dime.
Yeah, it's, you know, we, we've tried to avoid that situation, but from this point forward, it's not avoidable. So.
And I have to say something, that I don't think it's not been the will of this board or the Board of Selectmen. It really is about the resources and having the right resources, because it is fundamentally an expertise into itself to actually do, hold, everything from land auctions to really going through tax title and foreclosure procedures. And there's, you know, you, you can do that and come up with nothing if you don't have the right expertise on hand. So I feel really confident going forward that the amount of energy that we're going to draw from our financial team, once we get through this budget, will be very positive in that end. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? All right, board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we've gotten through the warrants, the financial warrants. We've had a few discussions along the way, but at this point, I'd like to open it up to anybody from the departments. We're represented by a great deal of our departments here tonight, so if anybody would like to say anything or, or talk about their portion of the budget, or where we're going forward, anything. Anybody has any discussion? No? Okay. All right, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, only to re-enter into the Finance Committee.
Make a motion to close the public hearing and re-enter Finance Committee.
May I second that?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. All right, do you have something for me about that other meeting issue? Patriots Day?
Only that you should do the same thing, what we did earlier. All right, so that you were, yeah, you just have to say that you had that same issue. You want me to?
All right, I mean, we didn't, we didn't have anything particularly pressing.
No, no, no. It was just the actual fact that you had that meeting on, on that holiday.
All right, so, so we had a situation very similar to what the Selectmen had, where we actually had a meeting on Patriots Day, and unfortunately, according to the Massachusetts rules, Patriots Day is not considered part of the 48 hours of posting, because it's a holiday. Holidays don't count as, as, up to the 48 hours.
You can have it on the holiday.
So, so, you know, I mean, we, we didn't, we did have it on the holiday, which we're, which we can do.
Right, we just had to post it earlier.
We just had to post it earlier, so.
That was when we met with the.
There wasn't anything that I can recall from that meeting that was particularly, that had any particular votes, other than what we talked about tonight, but I think we've got it. I think we're still covered in that.
I think minutes were, no, I think that we.
Yeah, we did one such a minute, I believe.
That we did that day.
Did we resign the minutes?
Okay.
No, you just have to reauthorize that.
Okay.
You do the same.
All right, so I would entertain a motion then to reauthorize the minutes that we voted at our last meeting.
May I second that? Go ahead.
Yes, make a motion to reauthorize the meetings from the Patriot Day meeting.
I heard you rolled that.
Did you second that?
I'll second that again.
All right, excellent. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
That's the meeting, the minutes from that meeting, correct?
Uh, no, that's, that's the, we met with the school board. He already did those.
That's the meeting after that, yes.
Okay, got it.
Yep. He's good.
Been a lot of meetings. Yes, a lot of meetings.
And he did circulate those before.
Yes, yeah, we saw him.
Yeah.
We have here the minutes of the meeting of April 24th, 7:00 PM.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
May I second that?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sign these. Who's the date, Patriots Day?
Seventeenth.
All right, Brian will sign that, and if you can put those in the conference room.
Sure. Happy to do that.
Do we have any, any other pressing, pressing issues?
The only thing we need to discuss, and I don't know when you want to discuss it, is.
You've got to talk while I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The only thing we need to discuss is if we're going to do any presentations.
Presentation at the town meeting.
I don't know when you want to plan for that.
Yeah, Mr. Davis had asked if we were going to do that, and I did inform him that if we decide to do so, that he will have that prior, a couple days, a couple days prior.
Well, because the numbers fluctuated a little bit, yeah.
Right, of course.
Okay, well, I think it would be, that whatever you can do, you know, we can get it to them.
I think if we have, if we can get put together some, like a PowerPoint with the information, and then a similar presentation to what we did tonight.
Okay.
Now, Justin's got that, the two-page piece too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is he going to be forwarding that very soon, shortly?
Yeah, I think so.
Because I think that pretty much, I mean, that sums up a lot of what, that's all the work we did, really.
I mean, I could just put that into PowerPoint and make some pictures to be easier.
Do we want to have a meeting prior to that, like Thursday, prior to the meeting?
We'd be good. Do a last-minute ramp up.
Last-minute ramp up before the town meeting.
That's like that. That way we can see if it's overlapping with any of the other presentations that have been submitted.
So Thursday, is this available Thursday? Or is Police Station?
I don't, I'm trying to see.
I'm fine with the Police Station, if that's the case.
I'll, I'll find out what the meeting location will be. I just, I can't tell you that yet.
We can adjust that accordingly.
I could do Thursday, a little bit after seven, sorry.
A little bit after seven?
Yeah, we can call it for seven, I'll just do a few minutes.
Okay, so maybe if you and Brian can work on that presentation, then I'll look it over, we'll, we'll agree on it, and then I'll put together a list of narratives to, to go along with it. All right?
All right, is it Police Station?
I don't know yet, I'm going to look to see. I think you might be able to be here.
All right, so pending, pending a location, we'll schedule a meeting for Thursday night.
Okay.
Do you like a motion and all that for this, for the meeting? Jane, is that the?
Yeah, you can do that.
Procedure?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, to have a meeting on Thursday.
May 4th at 7:00 PM.
May 4th, 7:00 PM, at a to-be-determined location.
May I second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Looks like it might be fine here, so.
Okay.
Tentatively here, and then with the clerk, and when she posts it, we'll make sure.
Till the night of, when we get the text that says.
Anybody have any other questions before we adjourn our meeting?
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
This is a right turn, please.
I know. Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to exit our regular meeting, only to enter into executive, executive session for Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21, Part 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at 290 Main Street, which the Chair declares an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, only to return to regular meeting after executive session is over, and only to adjourn. That's my motion.
Second.
Rule?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Please, please.